I'm to order. Ms. Hasky?
I'm present.
Ms. Aspas? Mr. Soul? Mr. Montoya? We have three, we have quorum. It is five thirty five by my clock, uh, we'll begin. Routine matters. Reports, no board, board action. A M S S A test data comparison by Amy Conley and is that Michael or Michelle? Thank you. Through?
Through, sir.
Through, excuse me, got my R and U backwards.
No problem.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Carlson, colleagues, and everyone at home. We are here to present the data for C C S D attendance, a chronic absenteeism, discipline report, and M S S A data. On our first slide, we have our October attendance rates. Seven schools are above ninety percent, which is Eva B., Judy Nelson, Kirtland Central High School, Kirtland Elementary, Kirtland Middle School, Nash Chitty, and Newcombe Elementary School. We have eight schools that are below the ninety percent, which are Crepep High School, Mesa, Newcombe High School, Nijoni, Newcombe Middle School, Ojo, Shiprock High School, and T B A. We also have a district average of eighty-nine point six percent. Next slide. This is our chronic absenteeism, which is for August sixth through October thirty-first. We calculate this by taking the day's absent divided by the days enrolled, which gives us a percentage. If this percentage is ten percent or higher, the student is marked as chronically absent. Next slide. This is our discipline by the number of incidents from August fourth through October thirty-first. And it's, uh, by school. The next slide. This is our discipline by behavior from the same timeframe, August fourth through October thirty-first. Our highest is drug violation at seventy-three. Our second highest is disorderly contact at forty-eight. Uh, next slide, please. This is our discipline comparison by action. So we have three for alternate setting. Fifty-two for I S S, which is in-school suspension. One hundred and ninety-one for out-of-school suspension. Four for other, which is confiscation, confiscation and phone contacts, uh, contract started. Thirty-seven is restorative justice. And I will pass it on to Michelle for the M S S A comparison report.
Good evening, board members, colleagues, and all attendees. Um, I have the comparison data for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, M S A E L A, and then on the next slide, it'll be the math. This is the comparison of all students. Um, and then dual-language students who attend Newcombe Allen and Eva B. Um, and then we also have the other subgroups, E L L and special education students. Total, we have one thousand nine hundred and six students across the district that this data was pulled for, um, and forty-seven dual-language students. Um, and there is a note here that the dual-language shows thirty-two percent proficiency. So the last two columns, whereas all students show thirty percent proficiency. Next slide. So on this slide, we are comparing the M S A math scores. Same number of students. And so the dual-language students for math shows twenty-seven proficiency, and then all students show seventeen percent proficiency. Please stand for questions.
Go ahead.
So looking, looking at the, um, on the discipline comparison by behavior, there's three that I'd like to ask about. To, um, the first one is under the disorderly, disreputable contact. Can you define that for me? You're not defining it for me, you're defining it for the audience, if there's anybody listening.
I'm part of the audience, I guess, and define it for me.
Mr. B., are you on? Mr. B., can you help define some of the discipline comparison by behavior on the report?
Yeah, um, this is Mr. B. So disorderly conduct, um, these are the behaviors that, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Disorderly conduct, um, these are all the behaviors that disturb the, uh, public, uh, that they did the school, school, um, premises such as fighting, making unreasonable noise, um, using offensive languages, and it could be, uh, misde manner.
So the follow-up question is, with that explanation, is it first offense, second offense, third offense, to what degree, and how is that dealt with? One within the classroom and then in the building with the principal or administrator?
That is correct, it is progressive. So they've tried to work with the student, probably called the parent, and then it just escalated a little bit further.
Okay. The second question is going to be about physical attack and fights. Is that zero tolerance, or is that again on a progressive discipline?
It's going to depend, um, if it's battery. Uh, if it's battery or greater bodily harm, then it's typically ten-day suspension pending a hearing. Uh, just depends on, on the, the, like, if, if the student fought back, or if they just got beat up. So it depends, and, um, but anything lower than that, it, there is progressive discipline in place.
And I'm assuming it's also going to be dependent on the age of the individuals involved, correct?
That is correct, yeah, majority of them are in the upper grades.
Okay. And if the, um, police are involved, that obviously changes the dynamics of how that response is.
That is correct, um, oftentimes it depends on the severity of the battery. Uh, of course, assault can be like spitting or like name-calling. But if it's like physical contact, like attacked, and someone got punched, and they just lay there, or they were defenseless, then that would be greater bodily harm.
Third one, last one is weapons, define weapons for me, please.
Weapons is, uh, a projectile. For example, we, of course, guns, knives, uh, and it also depends on the length of the knife, if I think it was two and a half or three and a half inches or longer, like a switchblade is an automatic weapon, and that typically can be a ten-day pending a hearing. I know there was a TikTok trend that just went by a month ago, where kids were making paper darts. So the dart, you know, the folding of the paper, uh, with, like with origami, would've been okay, but what's happened is kids are putting like staples in the tip, or paper clips, or metal object in the tip. So then that would be, you know, that could, would constitute a weapon that can fly, a projectile.
Okay. And then
You said only two.
Do we have? I'm just looking at the response, the higher rate percentage of proficiency in the dual-language, thirty-two percent over thirty, and then twenty-seven over seventeen, is there a reason for that, that we've been able to figure?
Yeah, so I think, uh, teachers have built a better relationship with the kids, classrooms are smaller as well. Sometimes it's like first and second grade, right, they, they work with the kid. Sure, am I correct, first, second, third, fourth? Yeah, so then they have a chance to work with the kids a little bit longer, it's almost like looping with the kids. So those relationships are, are established in, you know, kind of hard to do that in a year, but I mean, we have teachers that do it, though. But I think that would, that would be one of the factors for the higher scores. Not only that, I mean, of course, if a student, any student is bilingual or multilingual, right, their, their, um, what is it called, their schemas are larger, right? They have two schemas where there's an overlap of language that, um, that they know. So I would assume, that would, that would, can be attributed to the higher scores. In fact, I was like, wow, we need to have more students in our dual-language if, if they're that much higher than, um, all of our students.
Superintendent, you know, I'm well, you are well aware that I'm a very big supporter of looping.
Yes, sir.
Kind of giving yourself the own answer, and that through that data?
If you, if you look, especially the, you bring up the E L A, but if you look at the math, you know, it's, it's tough to explain exactly why things happen and everything, but it's a remarkable difference, so put it that way.
No, I, and I can see that in respects to the relationships that are built over time and, uh, what's occurring in that classroom with, um, teachers and students that are, uh, very trusting and comfortable with each other, and that shared knowledge that, that occurs in those classrooms through that looping process. So, again, I'm a very big supporter of it, I wish we would do a lot more of that, quite frankly. But I'm not the superintendent. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me? Um, and, and my question, I don't know if, um, if you had already addressed this, is there a difference when there is a, um, assault against another student, or if there is, um, if it's against a staff member from one of the teachers or staff members from C C S D?
So typically, if there's an assault against a teacher, more, more than likely, there's going to be charges, like with the police, I think it's a, it's a class four felony, I don't know if David or Devin are here, but they'd be to be able to answer that better. But within the school, it depends, it'll probably, more than likely, it'll be, well, it depends, right, because if the student has an I E P, right, an M D R has to happen, um, it's if, if it's a manifestation of the student's disability, then it's going to go back, right, there's, Joel can probably answer that better. But it's just going to depend, but if it's a general ed student, it would probably be, uh, considered a, if it was an assault on a teacher, it'll definitely be, um, possibly a ten-day suspension pending a hearing. Um, it, it would be the same for a student as well, because the whole thing is, uh, the battery, well, the battery is a bit more, because battery is actually like physical contact, and the way the board policy states it, assault is like, like you can spit on someone, or like you can name-call them or something like that. But the battery is the one that's, uh, that's, uh, that's where contact is made. And of course, there's also like sexual battery as well, but it's, it's definitely in the, um, C C S D matrix. Chair, can you?
I guess I just want to verify if, um, if there's a, if there's going to be a difference in, in regards to discipline and the path, um, for restorative justice, if the assault is on a student or on a staff member, if there's any differences in regards to the path of, um, restorative justice or discipline.
So, yeah, it does, so all of our students will get support, like, um, as they transition back in, right? In fact, I, I serve as a district hearing officer for any, um, students that are taken to hearing, which are like drugs and alcohol, well, not just drugs, but like, um, greater bodily harm, um, weapons. So typically, when a disposition is given, um, one of the things that we document is that our social workers, uh, check in with students and provide support as they transition back, or provide support while they're in the district alternative education program, or the district in the, the interim alternative education setting. Uh, but there is support for kids in there. But in one of the reports, it showed that there was about forty-seven, I think, restorative justice, um, uh, as a, as a discipline. So it depends on the level of the, uh, the offense. So, um, but, but they do, each, each of the schools really try to work with the, with the students instead of just sending them, like, if you look at that a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-one O S S, if we had seventy-one O S S, and they're drug-related, which many of them are T X C, right, which means there's, well, there's been some other stuff, too. But like, the, the T X C ones, the first level is a three-day suspension. So if you go seventy-one times three, that'll be a hundred and twenty-three, um, O S S, so that, it kind of inflates that number, but just the availability of students getting T X C vapes, like, you, teachers and staff can't tell that it's a T X C vape unless a L S A tests it, but, so it just depends.
Okay, so my last question, in regards to, um, to the offenses and restorative justice, is there a matrix? Are all students, um, when they have, they have an offense, are they all going to go through restorative justice as the way it's outlined? Or is there offenses that just bypass that restorative justice?
The big three will bypass restorative justice.
Which are?
Which are weapons, drug, and then greater bodily harm. So those ones typically go to a ten-day suspension pending a hearing. Also, there's, uh, I believe, distribution as well of drug, well, I said drugs as well. But like, there's, there's supports that are put into place, for example, well, I know of a kid that had a T X C, um, four times. And so it was three days, then five days, then six days, and then they were taken to hearing. So it's progressive, and in each of those steps, uh, there's restorative justice support, right? There's support for the kids, uh, they're checking in, um, and of course, like, there's, uh, if there's like assaults, or battery, or, um, like weapons, stuff like that, there's also a threat assessment that is conducted to see if it's a viable threat. So then, more than likely, if it continued to a hearing, the threat was viable.
Okay, and so that would really be dependent on the severity of the assault or the offense?
That is correct, like, for example, if a kid is just laying there getting beat up, right, that's, the kid didn't have a chance to defend themselves, so then that would be, um, that would be battery.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
I see down here, drug violation. That looks to me pretty high, I'm assuming that's pretty pervasive. What type of drugs is that, other than, because you got, uh, tobacco use in another column, is that alcohol or something else?
So alcohol will have its own, um, column, there's twelve alcohol violations, there's, uh, seventy-three drug. The most common one is T X C vapes or gummies. So they look like
Try that again, I didn't, I don't
They are T X C tetrahydrochloride, I don't know how I know that, but T X C, well, probably because I was a high school principal, I had to look up what T X C meant, but that's the most common. It's just readily available, kids have it, I mean, like, there, we've had schools that catch, you know, they're just available, I mean, it's once, once it became legal, four or five years ago.
You're talking about marijuana then?
Yes, yes, it's marijuana, but, but we're not actually seeing, like, marijuana leaves or marijuana, I don't know, plant, it's, it's T X C vape or gummies. That's what, the majority of them that we see. Now, our L S As do a field test where they test vapes if they're confiscated to see if they're T X C or if they're just nicotine, so they call them nic pens. Um, so those nicks, they're, we've had fifteen. But it's, if you look, like, like in the last couple of years of their data, it used to be alcohol that we would catch a lot of kids with, but it shifted towards T X C. Thank you.
So I'm going to, I have a question from Board Member Aspas, who's on the phone here. Um, she wants to know, is, is there a differentiation between, um, T X C marijuana use and T X C vaping? Or is it all just going to categorize the same?
So for the drug that's T X C, so it's, it's marijuana, right? T X C is the chemical formula for marijuana. But like, we've had some incidents where we have had, um, psychedelic mushrooms. Right, so it just, it did, it did varies, but the most common one is, uh, T X C, and then the vape pens, which are the liquid, and then also the, uh, gummies.
Okay, so let me try to get that straight for, for the board member. Um, any, if vape is determined not to be T X C, then that's included in a tobacco column?
That is correct.
But the drugs can include vaping as well as, um, gummies or smoked in another form? That all goes into the drug column?
That's correct.
Okay, but we don't differentiate, do we? I mean, this doesn't do it, but do we ever keep track of, of the difference in the number of vapes? Actual, this is vape and this is, or, and if we don't do that, could we do that? Because it'd be good to know.
We probably could, Amy, I mean, we probably could look and log entries to differentiate between which is most, but a majority of them, like, a majority of them, I'd say ninety percent of them, maybe even ninety-five percent are T X C vapes. So liquefy the vaporized, uh, T X C liquid, so it's, it's actually more potent?
So I have a question. So you, you mentioned the example of the student who had numerous, numerous offenses, so it went from three to five, seven. Do we ever do referrals for, um, substance abuse, um, clinics? Or do we do referrals to the hospital so they can seek treatment?
So we actually, um, one of the steps in the, the process is to refer to, actually, some schools initially for the first round, they actually have a, uh, I can't remember the name of the, they have a presentation restoratively where the, where the kids research the drug, and they create a presentation, and present it to the teachers, the principal, and a couple of teachers, uh, to, to try to understand, you know, the use of it, the, the negative effects of, of drugs, alcohol, or tobacco, which is considered A T O D, alcohol, drug, tobacco, or other drugs. We do some of them, some of the schools refer to like Johns Hopkins up here. Only thing that we're hearing is there's a backlog on, on, on support for them, so that's why many times we actually refer them to the non-clinical social workers, which are I C O, and then, of course, if they're a student with disability, they're referred, well, maybe still to non-clinical, but there's a, there's a form, there's a process in place for support for them.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. So, I, I meant to get back to you, if you still have your question.
Sure, I, can you hear me, is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to compliment, I was, I was actually looking at the, the data for the dual-language programs, and I just wanted to say that whatever's working is working well for students enrolled in dual-language. And, and whatever we, whatever we can do as a district to support that, because it shows that that model is working, whether it's, uh, I think most of the students are probably enrolled in the Naval Language Program, the immersion program. Is, is that correct?
That is correct, so it's fifty-fifty.
And, and this tells me that even, these kids are actually doing, doing better than students enrolled in English only.
That is correct.
And even looking at the novice levels for the, for math, the areas the dual-language have the lowest, the, the reds are lower than novice, which is really good. This data is very telling.
That is correct, sir.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
May I make one last comment? We only have one C S I school or M R I school remaining. Mesa came off status, I don't know if Mr. Carlson updated you all.
Awesome. Great, thank you, thank you, thank you, go ahead. Okay, hold, hold on just a moment, wait.
On your chart here, disciplinary comparison by action, are the numbers that are above them the number of individuals who have been disciplined? Or what does that number represent?
It says one ninety-one on top of one, one of the graphs. Is that the number of disciplines?
Incidences, yeah, numbers.
Yes, it's the number of incidences.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Letter B, right, am I in the right one? Letter B, first reading of G dash one nine five zero, G B P D, drug and alcohol testing of employees other than transportation employees by Ms. Chappelle. Ms. Chappelle, are you on?
She coming on? Ms. Chappelle, are you on?
My apologies, I was trying to get off of you, I apologize. Um, so this particular policy, um, we are bringing before the board to just make our policies in this area more well-rounded. Um, this policy is already applicable to folks, um, in the transportation department, so we're just making it applicable essentially to everyone else. With that, I will, uh, read the draft policy and then, uh, take questions. So the title, Drug and Alcohol Testing of Employees Other Than Transportation Employees. Under this policy, any employee of the district other than a transportation employee must submit to other than a transportation employee must submit to drug and alcohol testing if the employee's supervisor has reason to believe that the employee's job performance has been impaired by the use of alcohol or a drug. In addition to the above, an employee shall voluntarily submit to drug and alcohol testing after being involved in an accident involving a school vehicle or after an accident involving equipment used in the performance of the employee's duties. And when based on knowledge of the events and circumstances of an accident, the supervisor has reason to believe that the employee's involvement in the accident was influenced by the use of alcohol or a drug. When possible, the reason shall be documented by an affidavit signed by the supervisor. The superintendent shall develop procedures for drug and alcohol testing of employees subject to the following. The district shall assume the cost of drug and alcohol testing of employees. An employee who refuses to submit to drug and alcohol testing or whose test results are positive may be terminated from employment. An employee who is to be terminated as a result of test findings shall be granted an appeal upon request under policies GCQF and GDQD as appropriate, as well as relevant provisions of law. With that, I stand for questions.
Question.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
I apologize, Board President, but I can't hear your question.
Um, can you restate your question?
I didn't, I didn't ask a question, because I heard somebody on the phone over there.
It was, Board Member Aspas, she can't hear it.
So it's more of a comment?
Go ahead.
Is this something we could possibly give all the employees at the beginning of the year when they return for their employment? Or add it to their contract or make it part of their professional development?
Or possibly include in vector training, that's mandated?
Yeah. Thank you.
Can you hear now, Board Member Aspas?
What I wanted to ask was the CBA and how that states? And, and then on top of that, what's the definition of employee?
Ms. Chappelle, you want to try to answer that?
Sure, so the definition of employee would be anyone employed by the district, regardless of whether they are a member of the CBA or the union or not. I think the CBA right now is silent as to this point.
Ms. Chappelle? Ms. Chappelle, we're moving Board Member Aspas to closer to the speaker.
Okay.
So if you could repeat that as soon as we are able to put that near a speaker. Put it on the chair. We need that hand.
Um, go ahead. Maybe Ms. Chappelle could go ahead and try and talk it. Ms. Chappelle, go ahead and try and talk again, we'll see if you can hear from here.
Okay, so the first question, this would imply, apply to all employees other than transportation employees. I don't know the status of CBA negotiations right now. But it's, you know, something we can certainly visit with them on. I, I don't think the board's authority to pass a policy is separate from the CBA. So if the, if the union wants us to have further conversation about that, we can do that within the CBA document, but the board has the authority to pass its own policies.
Question is the, not only union employees, but there's also the, the employees that are considered at-will and with no representation and, and then, and then are those like ESS or, well, mainly ESS, are those considered an employee? Or is that, do they have their own drug and testing procedures or protocols?
So yes, it would apply to at-will employees, they are employees of the district. You are correct. ESS employees would have their own protocol. But what we are essentially talking about here is situations where adults are impaired by alcohol, alcohol or drugs in front of students, near students, in their periphery. So we're talking about a very narrow subset and something that is extremely important. And, you know, we have a zero tolerance policy on this within our policies already, if that helps. I can't hear her.
Where it involves students?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I only heard part of it.
Well, ESS is near students, they work with students.
So, Ms. Chappelle?
Yes, sir.
She's asking about ESS employees. Would they fall under the same standard? Do we have the ability to, to say the same things because they are technically not our employees?
I think the fix for that would be we would enter into, we would make that part of the ESS contract. So that if someone was, was impaired, that was employed by ESS, we would have the ability to work with ESS to do the same thing, so that would be the fix for that.
But in the, for now, we don't have that ability, we would have to get that fixed in place.
Yes, sir, that would be my assessment, yes, sir.
And what about our, our food service and what about RICA? What about those individuals?
She's asking about food service and RICA. Food service are our employees, except for the ones who are SFE employees, which are just a handful. But I imagine we'd need to do the same exact thing with them.
Yes, I agree.
And RICA.
And the reason why I'm asking this is because a lot of our administrators and principals are not fully educated on the who, who or how and what protocols or processes to take when individuals are in those situations. And it could put us in a legal situation if, if it's not done right. So, um, that's why I'm asking these questions and, and, you know, and hopefully they, they realize that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Chappelle, is there anything else?
Not on that topic, no ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to number three, possible board action reports. A E N M U research study evaluating the impacts of social emotional learning frameworks and programs on student development in New Mexico public schools by Ms. Cassette. Is she here or is she online?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I wasn't sure how I needed to present this, but thank you so much for allowing me to be here today to speak with you about this and giving me the time in the board meeting. Um, we are asking if middle school teachers and principals are willing to participate in a study that looks at the SCL curriculum that your particular districts use. We are reaching out to all of the districts in New Mexico and the ones that are willing to participate. So you would be part of a larger study. And obviously, it sounds like you have some wonderful things in place, just listening to your, I used to call it MASA when I was a school counselor, but the MSSA, um, data and your restorative justice. So all of those good things that you're doing in your district would fall under these SCL categories and frameworks as part of the study itself.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions?
No questions? Does she have any questions?
No.
No? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
You too, thank you.
Bye.
Um, letter B, Toys for Tots Distribution by Mr. So, Shiprock Youth Complex. Is Mr. So online?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Veden President, Honorable Members of the Board of Education, good evening. My name is Jonathan So, I'm the program supervisor for Shiprock Dene Youth. Before you is a request to collaborate for this year's Toys for Tots toy distribution. Uh, we collaborate with over 50 schools uh, every year to distribute Toys for Tots. It's that Marine Corps Native American Toys for Tots program. So that's my request this evening to collaborate with you. And I did attach some forms that need to go out to all of the schools. Last year, we distributed it to 11 elementary and middle school. We did not get any response from the junior high or the, I mean, the high schools. We didn't get any response from them. So we delivered over close to, over 3,000 children received toys last year. And this year, we're, we're wanting to do it again. So that's before you, and if there's any question.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the board?
Just a big, just a big thank you.
Oh, here's, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is Native American only, from what I hear?
No, uh,
It's awesome.
It's for all, all the children in these schools, regardless of race or ethnicity. It's for all children. So we have two schools that had, that have a high Native American population in the Farmington School District. So we deliver toys to them and it, we don't discriminate if they're non-native. We deliver toys to all of them and it's for all children from zero to 15.
She said, okay. Um, on a question on that, you mentioned none, none of the high school students or high schools participated, so there isn't an age restriction, am I correct?
The toys are up to 15, I believe that's the reason why we don't get any response, although we do still reach out to them. But the toys that we get are for ages 15 on down.
Okay, thank you. And then, oh, well, with your form, my understanding is that where it says student name, it's just the first letter of the student's name and their last name, correct?
Yes.
It's not their full name.
For privacy reasons, we just need their first initial and their last name and their age and their gender, because the staff will select toys that's age and gender appropriate.
Okay, all right. Thank you, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, letter C, request for approval of gift donation, Save the Children donation by Dr. Harvey. Okay, Dr. Harvey, you're up?
Yes, I'm here, thank you. I wanted to just, good evening, Board President and members of the board and Superintendent Carlson. I did submit a estimated cost of our donation from Save the Children organization. The pallets are going to be an estimated value of $20,289.56. These are going to be books and some toys and some clothing item. And so that is my report for this evening.
What was the amount again, 20,000? All right, thank you. All right, any questions or comments from the board?
Nope. No questions.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm hoping that Superintendent Carlson gave you some information from honorable council delegate Amber Crotty. She had some, uh, what was it? She has access to some possible tribal clothing and monies, additional monies, so, um, I'm hoping that we would take advantage of that. Ms. Harvey.
Dr. Harvey, did you hear that?
I reached out to, sorry, I did reach out to the individual's name that was presented to me and their phone number. And she didn't know what I was talking about. But she said she was going to go back to Ms. Crotty to ask questions about what she was wanting to connect with us for. So I did mention the tribal clothing. As far as we know from our end, tribal clothing was opened and then it lasted for three days and then they closed it because they didn't have any more funds. But I did let the individual know that we are available if they would like to talk to us about any other resources or if they had any questions. So we did connect with somebody from Ms. Crotty's, I guess, I think it's her, I'm not sure if it's an administrative person that works with her.
Yes, her legislative aide.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, there aren't any other questions, thank you, Dr. Harvey.
Thank you, enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Uh, letter D, CCSD, disposal requests, finance and operations by Ms. Jo and Mr. Armenta.
President Hasky?
Yes.
I, I believe Sharon just texted me and this is part of the motion for reports. This, these are the sections where you make a motion, I believe.
Okay, after each or after all of them?
Each individual.
Each individual, so we go back? Can you hold on just a moment? Okay, so we're gonna be voting on accepting the, for letter A, E N M U research study evaluating the impacts of social emotional learning frameworks and programs on student development in New Mexico public schools. Do we, do we, are we?
I make it.
To proof?
I propose that we accept items A through C.
Okay, perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Board Member Aspas, how do you vote?
Um, yes.
Board Member Montoya, how do you vote?
Yes.
Secretary So, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice President Wells, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we approve A through C.
President Hasky?
Yes.
I do want to comment.
Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm voting only because I think there's a big need, but I hate the fact that, I hate to have more, what do you, how the word, what's the appropriate word, redundancy. But I know there's a need and, and however way we can help our, our students, I, I think, I think that's the real big, that's why I'm voting yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. And Mr. Armenta, Ms. Jo, proceed, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent, staff members, and members of the audience here and online. My name is Shiba Jo, I'm the warehouse supervisor. I'm here with Mr. Armenta, the facility, our director of operations. And we would like to request for a couple items to be removed off of our, our CCSD inventory list. These items include our old pool equipment, kitchen appliances, laminators, poster makers, custodial equipment, old video conferencing equipment, may, two buses and one vehicle. And so it's, most of the pool equipment and most of the equipment appliances, a lot of these items have been replaced. These are just old items that need to be taken off of our inventory. So we do this every so often during the school year. So that's pretty much it. And then after we do this, we send it to the state auditor for approval.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Ms. Shiba, how do you, how are these going to be disposed of?
A lot of them are really old, so some of them that can't be salvaged will probably be recycled. And if there is anything on here, it'll probably have to go on the public surplus.
Public donation or public auction or?
Yeah, public auction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, board members, do you have a problem if we?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and we second it. Board member Aspas, how do you vote?
And which one, I'm confused about which one?
This one's letter B, the disposal request?
Okay, yes.
Board member Montoya, how do you vote?
Yes.
Secretary So, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice President Wells, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are moving on to
Get rid of it, Shiba.
Thank you.
We are moving on to, oh, you're, you're not on this next one, I thought you were on
I will, yeah, I, I'll be with her just to
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Yes, some older hand.
Alright, and then letter E, CCSD Disposal Request, IT Department by Ms. Conley and Mr. Thomas.
I'll also be helping. It's the same thing, it's just that this will be IT items. It's old desktops and laptops. We have a total of fourteen pallets.
Any questions or comments?
I make a motion that we approve disposal of these items.
Second.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
What exactly is being disposed in IT?
IT with fourteen pallets of computers?
Yeah, desktops and laptops.
And what is it?
Laptops.
And how do we know that they are scrubbed free from personal information?
We spent all summer long taking out the hard drives.
They took out the hard drives.
Okay.
They're squeaky clean.
I don't mean this to be funny or idiotic, but I know the extent they talk about where Hillary tried to get rid of some things and, and it wasn't that easily.
She felt couldn't leave.
How, I mean, I, we've already been hacked before and we don't need to have that done again.
Yeah. Yeah, when you take out, it's just kind of like, it's just the, the outer casing, their whole, the whole brain has been taken out of all of the machines. We did that and we put them all on spreadsheets and packed them all in the, each individual pallet and wrapped them. So we've been doing that all summer long.
Did you hear that?
I, I just heard some of it, yeah.
It's the shell, it's only the shell of the laptops and desktops, all the hard drives we're taking out.
Okay, alright, and I vote yes.
And Board member Montoya, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice President, or Secretary So, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Vice President Wells, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, and F, Update on Federal Advocacy and Possible Board Action on Resolution Supporting Making JOM for Funded and Part of the Mandatory Funding Budget by Ms. Chappelle. Ms. Chappelle, are you on again?
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Okay.
Karen, I emailed you the resolution.
Yay.
So we were just recently at the National JOM Conference and we were invited to put in a resolution that we've been talking about for a couple of years now. So they actually voted on it and passed it unanimously. Thought I would read it here for you all and potentially the thought was to ratify it and/or have the Board adopt it as well. So with that, Board President, would you like me to read it or would you like to give more information about the JOM Conference?
Board members, do you want the resolution read? Go ahead, Ms. Chappelle, you can read the resolution and then we can have, answer questions after the resolution's read.
Yes ma'am, so the title, A Resolution Requesting That JOM Funding Mechanisms Be Modified To Be Part of Mandatory Spending and Forward Funded. Whereas the National JOM Association is the collective voice of over 1.2 million Native American students and their parents slash guardians nationwide who are currently eligible to receive Johnson O'Malley services. And whereas the National Johnson O'Malley Association declares that the academic, social, physical, spiritual, and mental well-being of our Johnson O'Malley JOM students are our highest priority. And whereas our JOM students will one day be our tribal leaders and must be given maximum opportunity to bring about positive change. And just a quick aside, those first four whereas clauses are JOM associations, so they go in all of their resolutions. Whereas the Johnson O'Malley JOM Act originally passed in 1934 is a federally funded program designed to support the educational needs of American Indian and Alaska Native students attending eligible schools and through priority allocation to tribes. The program provides supplemental financial assistance to eligible contractors, which includes eligible tribes, tribal organizations, and school districts to enhance educational opportunities for Native students. And whereas JOM is a longstanding and important component of the federal trust responsibility of the United States government to Native nations. And whereas since JOM is a component of the federal trust responsibility, it should be made part of the mandatory budget and should be forward funded like other similar educational funding programs. And whereas on May 16th, 2022, the National Johnson O'Malley Association submitted a letter of support to include a request to Congress in the FY 2024 Bureau of Indian Education Budget justification to authorize forward funding of the Johnson O'Malley program to Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs, Bureau of Indian Affairs Brian Nguyen and Director of Bureau of Indian Education Tony Dearman and. Whereas advocacy is still needed to authorize forward funding for JOM and make JOM funding part of the mandatory funding budget. And whereas JOM funds are currently paid on a reimbursement basis and are part of discretionary funding, these mechanisms create uncertainty in funding and thereby diminish the sustainability and efficacy of educational programs that receive JOM funds. And, next page. Whereas if eligible contractors, which includes eligible tribes, tribal organizations, and school districts do not have certainty of funding, eligible contractors cannot create sustainable educational programs for children. This creates a stop slash start situation where gains in learning are seen initially, but then when funds are subsequently reduced, delayed, or interrupted, then these essential educational programs are changed or dropped. The learning gains are then interrupted and stunted. This is also where our students start falling through the cracks at even greater rates. This funding pattern, historical and current underfunding and government shutdown or other delays in funding is one of the biggest reasons why we haven't been able to make meaningful or significant improvements to the conclusions reached in the Marion Report and the Kennedy Report that the education provided to Native students is deplorable and a national travesty. That's a direct quote from those reports. Whereas these funding changes impact Native students the most because our students are the most at risk, given historical and current underfunding of astronomical proportions, recent interruption of learning due to COVID, not to mention joblessness, poverty, and unsafe and traumatic home lives in our communities, and now government shutdown. And whereas the vast majority of schools in Indian country are located on reservation land, which means that unlike other public schools, there are little to no property tax revenues, a state function, so there is no cushion or way to make up the loss of federal funds that are delayed or withdrawn. And whereas JOM forward funding refers to the allocation of program funds in advance of the upcoming fiscal year, this approach ensures that funding is available before the start of the school year, allowing for better planning, resource allocation, and program implementation. Forward funding helps address potential delays in budget approvals and appropriations, ensures that students receive, ensuring that students receive uninterrupted support. And whereas JOM is currently part of discretionary funding, each year Congress appropriates the funds annually. Mandatory funding is entitlement spending that is ongoing and does not require annual approval. With mandatory funding, JOM funds would not be caught up in delays associated with the continuing resolution process or potential government shutdown scenarios, and funds could be dispersed at the beginning of each school year with certainty on July 1st. And whereas the key benefits of making JOM funds part of mandatory funding and forward funded are as follows: stability and predictability. Eligible contractors, which include eligible tribes, tribal organizations, and school districts can plan programs with confidence knowing funds are secured before the academic year begins. Two, timely implementation. Eligible contractors, which include eligible tribes, tribal organizations, and school districts can immediately implement educational programs, purchase materials, and hire personnel without waiting for fund dispersment delays. Enhanced educational support enables consistent delivery of cultural and linguistic programs, tutoring, counseling, and other academic services tailored to Native students' needs. Or funding eligibility and administration allows for multi-year planning, sustainability, and improvement of long-term educational outcomes. Now therefore be it resolved that making JOM forward funded and part of mandatory spending are crucial mechanisms that will ensure Native students receive timely and continuous educational support. By providing funds in advance without the need for discretionary yearly approval, JOM-funded educational programs can foster a more stable learning environment and help bridge educational gaps for American Indian and Alaska Native communities. Now therefore be it further resolved that Congress modify JOM funding mechanisms such that JOM funds are part of the mandatory spending package and are forward funded. Now be it finally resolved that this resolution shall be the policy of NJOMA until it is withdrawn and modified by any subsequent resolution. And with that, I stand for questions.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Wells, or, Mr. Wells, go ahead.
Comment. I move that the Board support our support this motion.
Ms. Aspas, Ms. Aspas has a comment?
Yes. Okay, I, I got a couple of them. In short, because I couldn't really hear, in short, can somebody say what this resolution was, was about?
The resolution is about the school district supporting JOM to be forward funded and be mandatory. So because it's not forward funded, funded and it's discretionary, Congress decides every year whenever to fund JOM. This would make it mandatory for them to fund JOM on July 1st every year.
Okay, and did this have anything to do with the, well, I'm sure it did, but I mean, I know there was resolution before about, during the shutdown to, to grant those funds?
Yes, this is one of the reasons forward funded means that it would be funded even, it wouldn't be, it would be funded every year on July 1st, whether there's a government shutdown.
Right, and I'm, I'm just wondering why another resolution was the other one rejected?
No, it's still there, but this one states that it would make the funding mandatory. Right now, JOM funds are discretionary. And being mandatory, it would mean that they have to fund it every year.
Okay, so that's, that's the difference. And
Yes.
Also, when I guess this is one of our, because of our, our needs to to watch, you know, what is spent. I don't recall the Board saying that we were sending our Board attorney to a JOM conference and I don't know if that was out of her own pocket at the time and spent.
Ms. Chappelle, there was a question?
I couldn't really hear the question, my apologies.
Board member Aspas asked if the, you attending the National Johnson O'Malley Association Conference was out of the district funds or out of your personal funds?
So I donate all of my expenses for trips like that. And essentially, all that is charged to the district is my time spent advocating for our students with the resolution.
Did you hear that?
Not clearly, no.
She said she bills only for the time for advocacy and writing of the resolution.
But if, if that's possible, I'd like to see documentation on where as a board that we agreed to send her to do this work. One or two board members does not, I don't think that's legal. It has to be voted on and would have to be a majority or the entire Board. And especially public knowledge transparency. So again, it's, it's my duty to, to see these things and we can't just have, because really it's after the fact now. And, you know, I appreciate the advocacy, I, I really do, but, and it's needed, but it needs to be done the right way.
Did you hear that, Ms. Chappelle?
I did, and just to clarify, Board Policy gives that authority to the Board President specifically. And in the past, the Board has indicated they were supportive of me doing things like this. So if the Board is not supportive of that, then obviously I won't do them, but I believe that the time that I have the support to do this. But I, um, believe that the time that I have the support to do this, so this would be news to me.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
No, other than making a motion to accept the resolution.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I made the motion and I think Mr. Montoya seconded it.
Sure.
Okay, alright, we'll do a roll call vote.
Uh, Board Member Aspas, how do you vote?
No.
Board Member Montoya, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Secretary So, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice President Wells, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Last item, uh, number four, discussion. A, items for the regular school board meetings. Do you have any items?
I would like to have a presentation on the dual-language programs. On what the schools are doing, um, how they're being supported, how the principals supporting them, how the, um, ICO supporting them, what kind of parent participation we're getting, um, in those programs.
Are there any other items?
I do, um, I think, um, um, I think there's some things that we need to go through, um, regarding, um, supply, as far as our students and, and, um, also the employees. And I'm trying to be as general as I can and not specific and, um, so I, I'd like to have that on the agenda.
Um, could you elaborate? Is this a request for, for an executive session or a general?
I, I believe that, uh, executive would be good.
If you can, um, have that, have email, um, Ms. Chappelle and Superintendent, and then we can do the verbiage.
Okay.
Alright, and I do not have anything. Was there anything else? We're gonna move down to letter, or number five, adjournment. I have a, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, um.
Ms. Aspas, how do you vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Uh, Board Member Montoya, how do you vote to?
Yes.
Secretary So, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Vice President Wells, how do you vote?
Absolutely.
And I vote yes, so we adjourn at six forty-seven.